Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here for our regular meeting. Would you please stand -- I'll call this meeting into order. Would you please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Except we'll have roll call. Holly?
All councilors present, with Councilor Stefano previously requesting to be excused, and a quorum has been declared.
Thank you. We have agenda approval next. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There is not.
If not, Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda and excuse Counselor Stefano.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the agenda? If none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. I have two cards today, and please come up and identify yourselves. You have a three-minute time limit. We'll start with Mr. Pete McGee. Thank you for being here, Mr. McGee.
Thank you for allowing me to make my request and speak to the city council. I am the Secretary Treasurer for the Society Hall Foundation. Hopefully, you're aware of it down on the corner of Ross and Fourth. We've spent a lot of time, a lot of effort, putting that together and fixing that building up and having many events, and we want to apply for a beer and wine license. But to do so, we need first to have an amendment to the ordinance. We are within 500 feet of Trinidad Junior State College, and before we can proceed with our application for the beer and wine license, we need to have the ordinance amended, if you're so willing, to allow us to have the beer and wine license, given that we're within about 490 feet of Trinidad Junior State College. Speaking with the city clerk this morning, or this afternoon, about the procedures and whatnot, and this is the first step in that process, is asking for an amendment to the resolution to allow us to apply for the beer and wine license. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'd much rather see you all at Society Hall for an event. We have one February 13th for Valentine's Day, a string quartet, and then on February 20th, we have Don Conocente with a CD release, very popular musician. We're doing really well with this facility. It's working out very nicely. We're getting a lot of great comments. Every musician that's performed there has said what a special place it is, and it's one of the best places they've ever played. So it's going to be quite the jewel, if you will, for downtown Alamosa, I think.
Thank you, Mr. McGee, Council. Do we have any questions, Mr. McGee? No? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Christina Crowder, please come up. Identify yourself and your address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Christina Crowder, the project coordinator for solid waste management for the San Luis Valley Ecosystem Council. I live in Alamosa. Right now, we're starting a project--
And I'm John Stumpf.
Sorry.
I'm just here to give moral support to Christina and answer some tough questions--
Thank you, Mr. Stumpf.
Okay. Right now, we're starting our project involving a grant with the USDA to address illegal dumping in Alamosa and Suave County. Right now, I'm just gathering information and planning to map some illegal dumps and coordinate cleanups with the community. I wanted to talk to you tonight about another plan that we're working on with Cuneos Clean Water in Antonito. It involves submitting a grant with the EPA, which addresses solid waste and recycling. If we're awarded this, we'll start at the end of this year. The long-range plan is to have Alamosa be the hub of a hub-and-spoke model of transfer stations for solid waste and recycling. The transfer stations are going to be throughout the counties, the six counties of the valley, to prevent people from illegally dumping who don't have the resources or money to go all the way to Del Norte. And we're also looking with this project to include a regional recycling plan. And so it's important to get the city's involvement, not in the sense of bearing the cost, rather to encourage opportunities for small business development and to encourage the investment of other counties. The state's really pushing for regional planning right now. We really want to get the counties and municipalities to have full participation, so that all areas of San Luis Valley can benefit from the solid waste and recycling waste stream management and also to share costs. This can only happen through planning and problem-solving for solutions. It was once said, "If you fail to plan, you plan to fail." So we're going to -- we're going to different stakeholders to get letters of commitment for this grant. I wanted to show you the letter we gave to Pat Steenberg, so we can definitely get support from the recycling center. And I also have a letter that the county gave us, just kind of as an example. So, do I get this too?
Thank you. Bring that up and give it to our city clerk, please.
Mr. Stumpf, you've got three minutes as well. Thank you.
Oh, I have another three minutes.
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay. Well, this is a planning grant to do a regional program on solid waste diversion and recycling. And this is kind of a tall order. Recycling is a difficult program, but we hope to see something across the entire valley. The ecosystem council, which I am the project developer, Christina is the coordinator, she'll be doing on-the-ground work, and hopefully, I'll be helping to write some grants to do some more things in conjunction with the project. But we are going to be contracting with a consulting engineering firm that will be doing the technical measurements of the waste stream, doing estimates of what kind of infrastructure would be needed to do something on a region-wide scale, and also costing out some of that infrastructure. So this is a two-year program. It's just a planning effort at this point, but we have all six counties in the valley supporting this project. We think, anyway, I think.
Chris talked to Mineral this morning.
And so it's very important, because Alamosa has a recycling facility at this time. I don't know how much more you want to expand that, or what would make everyone feel comfortable about getting involved in a regional program. But this will be analyzed over a period of two years. So it's just the plan at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Stumpf.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. And so do we have any questions? Mr. Gregel, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Gregel, you have the floor.
Oh, okay, thank you. John, you're talking about planning. Is this planning for recycling or for a transfer station? Because you're telling me, you say you're looking at transferring stuff and recycling. Which one is it, or is it both?
It includes both, and we currently have a grant with USDA Rural Utilities to do a program similar to what we've already been accomplished in Cuneos and Custia County. Cleaned up a lot of illegal dumps. We looked at the transfer station problems and still aren't totally resolved there. Alamosa County has some transfer stations. This grant will go into Alamosa and Suave Counties, and in Suave, you have this landfill, which serves the northern part of the region, which has some problems, meaning codes and so forth. So we'll be looking at that. We currently don't have funds to look at Rio Grande and mineral counties, but this is something we could do during the course of the planning project. But we will be looking at both waste diversion and recycling.
So you're saying that the county does have a transfer station?
We would look at that.
Oh, you'd--
But particularly--
Today, they don't have--
The problems are on the east part of the county. Excuse me?
Today, they don't have a transfer station, correct?
To my knowledge--
I think there's one in Alamosa East.
This is something we'll be finding out.
Yeah.
And we're working closely with Land Use Ginger.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Daniel?
So you're working on a planning grant for two years with, if this goes well, what's the likelihood of implementation funds, or is this to help, just help bring everyone together and we're supposed to sustain it after that?
I think most of it will be bringing everyone together, defining the partnerships. What, I'd like to say, what makes each entity feel comfortable about getting involved with something like this? It would be a great thing for the valley, and we don't want anybody to be stretched out there to be supporting something that's not going to support itself. So this is something that they're going to be looking at.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Stumpf. Thank you, Ms. Crowder.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Thanks.
I'll ask staff if they have any follow-up on Mr. McGee's request. Is that a request for a variance to our ordinance, or--
Mayor, we, past couple of years, amended our ordinance to exempt Trinidad State Junior College and then Adam State College from the 500-foot limit with respect to hotel and restaurant licenses. What they would be asking is that we do a similar ordinance amendment, such that the 500-foot restriction would not apply to whatever kind of license they're looking for, which sounds like a beer and wine. So it wouldn't be a variance, because it wouldn't be particular to Society Hall. Instead, it would be an ordinance change that would eliminate that distance restriction from either Adam State or Trinidad, or I guess in their case, what they really need is just Trinidad, but that's what they're asking for. So it would be an ordinance process, and I guess what I would say from a staff perspective is if council's interested in entertaining that, that you let us know, and we can work up what an ordinance would look like, and it would run through the process.
Thank you, Eric.
Excuse--
At what point, Eric, would we have to let you know?
Yeah, that was going to be my question.
At what point, at whatever point you want us to get started. I don't know what kind of timeframe Society Hall was thinking of.
You didn't obtain a motion to proceed.
Well, we're not going to do any motions to do anything that isn't on the agenda, but I mean, we just get your sense that you can do that, or, you know.
It would definitely have to appear on next meeting's agenda, correct?
It would have to appear on an agenda to deal with it. And you can just, I mean, you can tell us, you know, you need a motion, but people say, "Yeah, we're interested in looking at it."
Counselor Gregel?
Yeah, that's, Mayor, I was going to make that point, that at least if council wants to give our clerk, our attorney, to put together something to bring before the council.
Counselor Henley? Counselor Daniel?
So with the ordinance currently as it stands, could they apply for a special events license now, or not, because it's too close to Trinidad State?
They can and have applied for special events licenses.
I think there's a limit in the going through that routine is what they're trying to eliminate, and just make it where they have a permanent license is what they're trying to achieve.
So, and if we looked at the things that Eric said he can look up, then we could make that--
What we can do, part of what we were talking off to the side is, you know, if you make that amendment, does it just lift it so anything could go next to TSH, CNASU, or can you, what can that wording be? So there's a little bit of some offline talk that needs to occur, but Eric and Holly can work on what that ordinance looks like, and in the council communication, explain some of those things.
Thank you, staff. I think that's probably the appropriate way to proceed with this. So we'll just wait for you folks to let us know what's in the best interest of the citizens.
So by the head nods and the questions, there seems to be interest in this, so staff will begin working on what that would look like in either the next meeting or the meeting thereafter, have something for your review.
I think you have a nodding consensus. Thank you, council, and so we'll move on to Consent Calendar A. The Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items, which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we have three. The approval of the minutes for the meeting of January 20, 2016. Authorized staff to sign the audit engagement letter with Walt Smith and Bateman and Associates, Inc., for audit services for the 2015 fiscal year, and the permitted use by special review request by Crown Castle to allow the installation of additional telecommunications equipment on any existing towers. On any existing tower, sorry. Council? Counselor Gregel?
I had a comment on item C1A. This is, when we're talking about this, we're talking about a tower instead of the water, the water deal that we have out there where people place stuff on top of it.
Correct. This is an item that came to you previously, but the property owner had indicated that they did not have an agreement in place. So council tabled it until that agreement was in place.
Oh, okay.
That agreement doesn't necessarily impact any of the nuances related to this. Council just wanted to make sure there is a property interest and that that agreement was in place. They now have that in place, which is why staff has brought it forward. So this is an item that already was approved by P&amp;Z and was tabled by council.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions on Consent Calendar A?
I do. Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. This question is for Eric or Heather. I don't remember, but do we have a limit as to how many new things can go on these towers?
We encourage co-location of all of these facilities rather than erecting new towers, so the limit is what the tower can support. That is up to the tower owner to enforce.
Thank you.
Counselor Gregel?
Any further questions? I'll make the motion to approve Consent Calendar A.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second on Consent Calendar As. Is there any further discussion? Now, start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
We'll move on to regular business, presentations from outside agencies. Tonight, we have an update on the Story Walk. Thank you for being here. Would you please identify yourselves and your addresses for the record, please?
I'm Billy Joe Cooper. I live at 224 Shawn Street in Alamosa.
And I'm Ozaneth Hordia, and I live at 14600 Road 5 South in Alamosa.
We are with Save the Children and the newly-created Alamosa Literacy Council. Back in August, we came and approached you guys and discussed about implementing a Story Walk around City Hall, and that you guys passed. For those city council members who weren't here, a brief expl-- Did I turn it off? Turn it off. A brief explanation of what a Story Walk is, is we are going to put up to 32 frames that'll be on posts that will have storybook pages. So families will be able to come and walk around. Kids who are of age who can read will be able to reach the book. Parents who have toddlers, the frames are going to stand tall enough to where the parents can read the books as well and not have to bend down too low, but tall enough to where the kids who are at reading age can read it as well. So there's not a whole lot of lifting up on that. And it's a thing that's around different places. Boston created one. Boston Children's Museum has one that we're kind of mirroring ours off of. And so we have an example of what the frame will look like. The one that we have with us is a much smaller frame than what we will be having. We will be having a frame that'll be 18 by 24, that will hold all-size storybook pages, but this is a much smaller version. We have been delayed in the implementation of the project, because we've been looking around for the best community efforts that we can get. Throughout the last six months, we've been able to get several organizations involved and in partnership with us. We have Reach Out &amp; Read, American Red Cross, the city council, Alamosa Elementary, Alamosa School District, the migrant education program, Trinidad State University, Trinidad State College, Junior College, Boys and Girls Club, and Early Childhood Council are all in partnership with us on this project that we're doing. Trinidad is actually going to be building the frames that we will be implementing into the project, and that is one reason why it's taken so long. Originally, we were going to go with a lady in Wisconsin, and Ozaneth and I both just felt that we needed to keep everything community-based for this project, and were able to get with the right people at Trinidad, and we were able to get them to approve the project. And so we will have these throughout. They're going to spread out a little wider than what was originally discussed, which is nicer, because it'll give them more space between each of the things. As of right now, we are looking for an implementation date of April, sometime in April. It'll be in that spring, which will be great, because it'll allow us to get it all in place and in time for all of the summer festivities that we have in the city, and it'll be ready for Summer Fest and all of that stuff. It'll also be nice, because during Summer Fest, we will be having a booth for our literacy council, where we'll be giving out hundreds of free books to the community, to the kids, and we'll also be able to really promote the Story Walk at that event as well. We'll be having a ribbon-cutting ceremony. Valley Courier will be following us around throughout the time, taking articles and doing that. But Trinidad's also going to have their own publicity group, putting it out over in Trinidad and other places. This has turned into a great opportunity for the city, because it's nothing that the state of Colorado has. So it is allowing us to be the starting ground of something that is going to help improve and expand in many years to come.
Yeah, and I just want to say, our community has been very responsive. We were able to raise the money from the banks, agencies, just even individuals. They've been willing to sponsor this Story Walk, so it's been, it's become a community project, which is very, very exciting.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. One quick question. Is this a book that's in the frame, or is it a page of a story?
It's a page of a story. So for each book that we get, we purchase three books. It'll allow us to be able to laminate them, and so anything that's on one side, we're able to have that. We will also then have extra pages. That's where the third book comes into play. We'll have extra pages, so that way, if a page gets destroyed, we are able to replace it and be able to do that. We will get them laminated, plus they'll be behind polycarbonate plastic, so it's also really protected as well.
And then my next question is, will you change out the stories every so often? How's that--
Yeah. Every quarter, or every, originally, when we first discussed it, every season, so we'd have a book kind of about summer and one about winter, and then eventually, after we kind of cycled through those, just getting different books that, you know, either books that are, that can impact the community in a way. If there happens to be someone who's written a children's book in the community, you know, that would be a way that we can also put that in there. It's, you know, it can be three months, it can be for however long. Right now, we've done it with the process of thinking of changing it every quarter.
Well, thank you.
Counselor Henley?
This sounds like a really great idea. It sounds very exciting, and I'm looking forward to it. Sort of to add on to what Councilman Vehill said, is when you choose the book, so obviously, did you say there's 30, how many spots are there?
We're going to put in 33. There'll be 32 designated for the books. Most children's books go to about 32 pages.
I guess that was my question, is do you then have to make sure you have a book that has exactly that many pages?
Yeah, and if the book is smaller, that is okay, because we can then spread out the pages and put different things in between, that can be a move, different educational purposes in between that can refer to that book.
Sounds very good. Thank you for your hard work. It sounds like a great idea, and I'm looking forward to it.
And we're also trying to do the English and Spanish.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, we're going to try as much as possible to make it a bilingual thing as well.
Counselor Gregel?
Billy Joe, you talked about working with the city. Are you working with the library?
We are in conjunction with the Library, Parks and Rec, as of right now, yes.
And then how, I see the frame, is, are you going to put poles around some area, or how does--
There will be, we will be, Alamosa Building Supply is a big partnership also with us, and they are providing pressure-treated wood frames, poles, kind of like the ones that are currently around the track that the Early Childhood Council and United Way put out. So we will have those, they will be placed out after, discussed, talking with Parks and Recreation Library on Monday. When we get closer to it, they're going to do all of the important things of locating all the lines and everything along the pathway, so we don't have any of those problems. And then we will dig and implement it all in one big day, have a big implementation day, I guess, I don't know. Just dig the holes, put in the poles, fill the concrete, but Alamosa Building Supply has provided all of the concrete and all of the posts for this project.
So Parks and Recreation will have the spots where you're going to put these all at?
Yeah, they will be there that day, helping guide. They're going to rent an auger to help, just so we can get it done quicker, and then we'll have people go behind and put in the posts and do the concrete, and have a ribbon-cutting ceremony that evening.
Good, thank you very much.
Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies, I would like to commend you on your efforts of being at the forefront of promoting literacy to the youth in our community. The one thing I like about what you talked about earlier is that you're collaborating with Trinidad. Could you elaborate a little bit and let us know how you're collaborating with them and how by having those students help you build the frames, how they're learning new skills as well?
Well, we took them the frame that we have, and the students were able to sit down and look at it and be able to design pretty much their own things. So they're able to take their own design stools that they're learning in welding and be able to learn how to weld these things. And I think the greatest thing about this is that the students are going to be in school, and they're going to be building these frames, and they're going to have that pride and that ownership that they need, that they can have with their community, that if they ever leave and then they come back and visit with their families in the future, they can be like, "Oh, I made this." And we were really hoping to try and get the high school involved as well, so they could learn to have some of the building skills of the design features, but the high school doesn't have the tools that we needed. So Trinidad was the next thing, but it's great, because it allows them to have, you know, there's not too many projects sometimes that allows you to develop that pride that you need to have in your community and to take ownership for something. And when you have ownership of something, a lot of times, you're more likely to protect it, and it'll allow those students to have this extra protection for the project, especially with it being in such a well-trafficked area.
Thank you so very much.
And I just want to say, when we asked Trinidad if they wanted to be a part of this project, they were so excited and thankful that they had the opportunity to be a part of this project, so.
Ladies, thank you so much for that. Obviously, this is an opportunity for our children not only to recreate, but educate, as well as all our parkgoers. And so, you know, thank you very much for doing this. Appreciate your insight and your energy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have handouts we'll hand you guys.
We'll move on to business brought forward by city staff. Tonight, we have Resolution Number 2-2016, a resolution finding substantial compliance of the Zenitrem Properties LLC Annexation Petition for the annexation of a tract of land into the city of Alamosa. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and council. We have another annexation.
We have another annexation. This property is a portion of an enclave lying generally south and west of Eighth Street and west of vacated Center Avenue in the Washington addition. The owners are requesting annexation as they plan to begin marketing the property for sale. They believe that it will help their sale value if it's in the city. This is a part of an enclave, so it is something that is attractive for us to annex, and the property is served by a paved street on the north. Water's available. Sanitary sewer is available to the front of the property. We need to evaluate the best way to get sanitary sewer service to the west edge of the property.
Thank you, Pat. Do we have any questions of Pat?
Counselor Gregel.
I guess I have a couple. You said this is one of those enclaves. There's... Isn't there more than one property there that we're... we were thinking in the past that eventually we would want them to come into the city because they're...
Yeah.
I guess my question is, if that's the... if this is one of the enclaves and the application applicant wants to come into the city, is there a different route path of going through and bringing those people in instead of the annexation process, or how does that work?
Not unless you, as a council, choose to unilaterally annex the property. It's been an enclave for more than three years. You have the ability to just go in and annex it basically against the will of the property owner if you choose to. At that case, it's a different process.
But is... Can we do it like in pieces, like, for example, this section here? Could we bring that in and do exactly what you just said with just this piece of property?
I don't believe so. I think...
It would have to be the whole?
I think we would have to do the whole enclave, but I can research that.
I'd like to see if maybe, you know, if you can bring it in sections, you know, if... because they're willing to come in right now, and I know... I don't know if you had an opportunity to speak to the other two property owners to see if they do want to come in or not.
I haven't had an opportunity yet.
But if that's a possibility, because the less... if we bring up a section, then we don't have to deal with so much with another section, Matt, so.
It's attractive. I would like to be able to do that.
So, I'm not sure if I got a little confused on that. I think before us tonight, this property owner would probably want to make sure this is moving forward. I think staff's intent was to talk to the other two property owners about the unilateral annexation that could occur and the benefits, because we obviously do want to try to get them annexed in, but depending on how those conversations go, I'm not sure this property owner would want to delay the annexation of their property. I think they would still want theirs to move forward, and if our discussions catch these two up and they're coming in roughly the same time, that's great, or if they take a little bit longer. Is that how that ended, that conversation?
I believe it, too. Yeah. I wouldn't recommend we put this off to find out the result of those conversations.
And that wasn't my question. What I'm saying is, we've discussed that there's... it's an enclave, okay? And if we can proceed in taking this one section of that enclave and bring it in, not delay it, then proceed that way instead of proceeding through annexation and all this other... Because I'm understanding enclave is one way, annexation's a different way. Correct? Am I correct?
The enclave is a description of this type of land. It's an enclave. There's two ways we can annex it in. The process that was initiated by the property owner...
Correct.
Or the city can do it unilaterally. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. And I don't... If the city would do it unilaterally... The term, my tongue starts twisting. If we could do it that way, I don't think we would delay the project at all.
But if we do it unilaterally, then we might go against the wishes of the property owner. I think the annexation process is much more responsible.
Well, maybe we need to ask the people that are annexing if they would want to go that way.
Pat, is there a difference in regards to the process when it's initiated by the property owner and what they need to provide versus if we do it unilaterally, what the city needs to provide?
Yes, there is.
Can you explain that difference?
I can explain it to the best of my knowledge. It's a... What it does is it abbreviates the process a little bit. One of the questions here that I can't answer tonight is, can we unilaterally annex a property that's in the middle of an enclave and leave properties out of it?
So, this is in the middle?
Yes. This... If you see the plat... The northeast corner, that part of the property right there is the property owned by the Martinez's. The property to the south is part of this enclave, and the property to the west. So, it's... They are taking a piece out of the middle of an enclave and actually creating two, where there is one now.
And I'm... The point I'm trying to bring out is, if there's a way of doing this and moving it in a way faster than the annexation process...
We can research that. If we can speed up the process for the applicant, we have no reason not to.
Because in no way am I trying to delay the project or stop it in any way, so... We had discussed this, in fact, at a retreat, that there is a possibility, because there is a lot of enclaves throughout the whole city that were... Years back, we used to... We were trying to bring those all in, and I know we had some times where we kind of used that for an annexation.
You've used it once, to my knowledge.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Pat, one of the issues that I was wondering about was, I know that we are repaving, what is that, Eighth Street? And we had some concerns specific to aligning that portion of the street with the east side of Two Eighty-Five. What... Have we made any progress in trying to obtain a possible right-of-way to align those streets?
We have not pursued the acquisition of the right-of-way since we talked to the owners... Oh, it was a couple of years ago? But right now, we're still trying to get CDOT approval for the project.
Okay.
I'm not real enthusiastic about buying the right-of-way until CDOT tells me I've got the green light.
Certainly. Thank you, Pat. We have any other questions of Pat or staff? Counsel?
Mayor, I'm sorry. Like I said, I'm kind of confused here because if we look at doing it the way you said, bringing this enclave in, finding... How long would this delay the deal?
No. This... What you're doing tonight is approving a resolution, basically finding their petition substantially compliant.
Okay.
If we discover in the next week or ten days that we do have different alternatives to speed up the process for the applicant, we can still pursue those at that time.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. That's what I was...
All this does is initiate the public notice requirements.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor. So, if there are no further questions or comments, I move that we pass Resolution Two-Dash Twenty-Sixteen, Finding the Zenitrem Properties LLC Annexation Petition to be substantially complete, and set the date for an eligibility hearing for March sixteenth, twenty sixteen.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second on Resolution Number Twenty, Twenty-Sixteen. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Council. We'll move on to fire. Tonight, we have a public hearing and second reading on Ordinance Number Five-Dash Twenty-Sixteen, An Ordinance Approving the Intergovernmental Agreement Amongst the Municipal Fire Departments and Fire Protection Districts in the San Luis Valley for the Provision of Mutual Aid. Thank you, Chief, for being here.
You may... Mayor, Council, as previously stated, this is an updated version of the mutual aid agreement that's been in existence for many, many years amongst the fire departments within the San Luis Valley, so it's just here for your approval and going from there.
Thank you, Chief. And so, with that, I will open the public hearing on Ordinance Number Five-Dash Twenty-Sixteen. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on this issue, please come forward and address Council. Mr. McCann?
Dan McCann, eighteen oh nine Sunset, Alamosa, Colorado. Anytime you can bring people together is a good thing to me, and this is what we need. And this has been going... Because I've been political here for twenty years. I've been here twenty years, and the county and city are really getting along with things, and it really makes things better. This idea of this autonomy stuff just causes trouble.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Ordinance Number Five-Dash Twenty-Sixteen and bring it back to Council for discussion or motion.
If there's no further discussion or questions, I move that we approve on second reading, Ordinance Number Five-Dash Twenty-Sixteen, An Ordinance Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement Amongst the Municipal Fire Departments and Fire Protection Districts in the San Luis Valley for the Provision of Mutual Aid.
I second it.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on Ordinance Number Five, Twenty-Sixteen? Seeing none, start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to city manager legal.
Thank you.
Tonight. Thank you, Chief. Tonight, we've got a first reading on Ordinance Number Four, Twenty-Sixteen, and ordinance amending Section Fourteen-Dash Fifty-One-C of the Alamosa Code of Ordinances to exempt agricultural zones from the eight-inch limitation on non-ornamental plants and vegetation. Is this Eric?
It is. So, Council, this is what I would call a cleanup ordinance. We recently were addressed by a citizen who was concerned about the cattails growing on city property out by the ranch and had asserted that they were weeds, and I thought, "Cattails aren't weeds. They're not on the weed list." And then, I thought about our ordinance, and I said, "Wait a minute. They're larger... They're taller than eight inches. Wait a minute. Almost everything on the ranch is taller than eight inches. We need to revise this ordinance." So, this ordinance recognizes that in agricultural zones, plants do typically grow taller than eight inches and exempts... We have a definition in our recently amended nuisance ordinance dealing with weeds that says that any plant over eight inches high that's not an ornamental plant is a weed, and that can't be true in agricultural zones. So, this just makes clear that that definition only applies in non-ag zones of the city.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions of staff? Counselor Daniel.
Where are the agricultural zones?
I believe there's only one, and it's the ranch.
Right. Are there any further comments, Counselor Gregel?
If there's no other comments, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we passed on first reading, Ordinance Number Four, Two Thousand Sixteen, and set it for a public hearing on, what is it, the six... Seventeenth at seven o'clock or sooner after?
I second.
I've got a motion and a second on Ordinance Number Four-Dash Twenty-Sixteen. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Council.
Could I just jump in? I pulled up the city zoning map, so there's ag zones that is the ranch, then there's an ag zone by the airport, there's an ag zone by the cemetery, and by the recreation center.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Counselor Daniel?
Oh, I was just thinking.
All right, so we'll move on to committee reports. Has anyone attended a committee?
Counselor Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick update from the school board meeting that I attended last Monday. They introduced their new transportation director. He's doing a great job in getting the fleet back in order. They're looking at different ways to make the process of getting trips for the students and teachers to make it much more simple. They... It's really surprising, but it's kind of that time of year, they're getting people together to look at the calendar for next school year already, and days off and vacations and contact hours and that type of stuff. And they also had a update from the district team, district parent team and that type of stuff, and they're just keep on rocking and rolling with the school year.
Thank you, Counselor Vehill. Counselor Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a committee report for the Alamosa Housing Authority. Just an update, they wanted us to let the community know that they replaced thirty-one water heaters and furnaces on Thomas and Oliver. They did some concrete replacement on Thirteenth and San Juan, and the next big project that they're looking at, working on, is replacing the gutters on Thomas, Oliver, and College Court.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. Anyone else? Counselor Hensley.
So, I went to my first Cattails Gulf Board meeting, and they elected their new officers and went through budget and proposed budget going for the next year. It looks like some real exciting stuff as far as being on track for new members. It was... They had a very busy year or season this last time, and their numbers were up, and so they're looking forward to some of those same numbers, and John Attencio has some great ideas for different events and different competitions, so pretty good first meeting that I went to.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Gregel?
Mayor, I had a question for Counselor Hensley. We had an email that the restaurant's under new management, or do you want the city manager to address that?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Gregel. As of Monday, the restaurant is under new management. I am probably not going to pronounce the name of this person correctly, but it is Frances Vanderstoppen, I believe. She previously worked at Milagros, and I talked to Joelle today to find out a little bit more information. They obviously still have all the inventory that was purchased, and so they're gonna stick with the menu to make sure they're using the inventory. She's met with staff. They're keeping the same hours at this point in time, and she'll be evaluating it. I think she may have different menu items in mind, but they don't want to waste any of the inventory and want to make sure that they keep it open and accessible for people who are used to eating out there and then start to grow the customer base.
Are they gonna keep the same form of management? I mean, is the board gonna run it, or are they leasing this out to this person?
My impression is that it's not a hundred percent a lease, but that it's not the same that it was set up previously as well. I think those details, when we have the work session on the seventeenth...
Good.
They could really dig into, and I think they'll have a few weeks under their belt to have a better idea of how things are going as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else? Now, we'll move on to staff announcements.
We have two areas. Heinz is coming up. He's got some updates and some just exciting news for library as well.
The first couple items relate to the library. You should have your handouts in front of you there. The first one is from the last library board meeting where they were all in agreement of instituting the READ program at the library. And basically, that stands for Reading Education Assistance Dogs. It's a program that improves children's reading and communication skills by employing a powerful method as reading to a dog, but just not any dog because you have to have a special dog and temperament to do this. So, they're trained, tested, registered, liability-insured therapy animals, and we've got one member of the board, Laura Bruno, who is certified and has the dog Moose, and that's the second page there. So, we're looking at implementing that for at least the next five months through June. We're looking at, still looking at what dates they're going to be, and right now, she's kind of narrowed it down, the time to four to six. Usually, it's gonna take one kid about fifteen minutes each, so you're gonna have eight kids go through this, and basically, the point of it is just trying to get kids, especially ones that are having problems reading, to get more comfortable with it, read to a dog that's nonjudgmental, and just get better at reading skills overall, so.
It is something... She's also been in Alamosa Elementary School, and so a lot of the kids are used to this, and it's worked really well there, and we're gonna minimize any allergies. We'll post that their dog is there, and we'll take them in and out of the back door and those types of things as well.
Yeah, the reading will occur in the children's story room. We're gonna cover the floor with, kind of protect it some more. The dog that Laura said, you know, to be bathed, you know, there's got a lot of things that they're gonna do beforehand, even before the dog gets there, that'll minimize any kind of allergies. And like the city manager said, we'll be running it through the exterior door of the story room. to do beforehand, even before the dog gets there, that'll minimize any kind of allergies. And like the city manager said, we'll be running it through the exterior door of the story room. So, it won't be running through the library itself. It'll be in and out through that outside door on the north side of the building. Any questions?
Thank you, Heinz. Sounds like a neat program.
It'll be something new, and I think it, you know, she's finding great success over at the elementary. And this will be even, this will be a little bit more of a homey atmosphere than compared going to the school itself and with all the kids around. You'll actually, the kids will get a little more me-time in doing the story. So, it should be very productive.
Counselor Daniel.
Sorry, Heinz. I thought of a question. If there were other dogs, do they have to be READ certified, or are they just therapy dogs with the appropriate documentation?
There's only one dog and one trainer certified in the whole valley. And basically, it's Laura and Moose. And they have to go through their own program. There's a separate organization that certifies all these. As you can tell, they've got, they're called pet partners, basically. And they've got, you know, an ID. They go through training. In fact, she spent a lot of time up in, the nearest trainer's up in Denver. So, she spent a lot of time going back and forth to get herself and the dog certified to do this.
Thank you. She has, though, indicated if people in the valley have interest, she can explain the program to them, how they can get the training and that kind of thing. So, if people out there are interested in trying to participate in this and want to do something with their pet, it doesn't even have to be a dog. It can be other types of pets as well. So, she has that information and can provide it to them.
Okay. The next item is the, on the brochure there, on the last page, is Find it Colorado. Our Alamosa Public Library, along with twenty-one other public libraries around the state, are in a pilot program funded by the State of Colorado Library. And basically, it's a mobile app that you can put on your mobile device. And basically, it just lets patrons locate and search, you know, their library catalog from any location anywhere, basically. It's very simple. And basically, it's going to just, you know, designed for all mobile devices, both Android and Apple. And they'll be able to locate your books, your movies, music, and whatever else is in the catalog. You'll be able to use your library card and look at your account, renew books, place books on hold. And you can look at any of those libraries that are participating in this program. And also, what we're finding, what they've told us from the state level, that this is a great resource for K through twelves, because a lot of the educators are using mobile web-based devices for, you know, their instruction. So... And also, they're finding that, you know, once we start, we've started advertising on the Alamosa Public Library website, and you'll get more interest, more circulation, more use out of the library when the mobile app is present and able to be used. Questions? Nope. Okay.
Thank you, Heinz.
All right.
Appreciate the information.
Got a couple more things.
And we have a rec board meeting tomorrow at eleven-thirty?
Yes, sure do. And it's going to be, as you saw in emails, it'll be limited to capital items for the upcoming years. Just kind of a recap of the ICE Fest. Counselor Coleman, thank you for spending a lot of time out there. That was great. It was our seventh annual, our second annual Rio, and the first annual Fremont Haunt. So, that went fairly well. Unfortunately, the weather was a little warm that day, you know, so we had a little bit of ice issues. But they improvised and kind of saved the day on one of the statues, anyway. But from a cost, you know, we had their costume contest with the kids. This year was thirty-five kids. Last year was sixty-eight. So, Andy said, you just can't top frozen. And that was just perfect for kids on that one. The Grub and Pub went extremely well. In fact, they sold out all the tickets for that one. We're still waiting for the Kiwanis meet and greet to see how many were there. Last year, we had three hundred and fifty. Scavenger Hunt was about the same, fifty-seven versus sixty-three last year. Snowmen were five and nine. The race was a little less this year, which we were kind of surprised. We had a hundred eighty-five registered and a hundred and seventy-one actually competed in there. We had two hundred and twenty last year. Had four teams for the new Fremont Haunt. That went fairly well. About the same for the Bonfire. And on sponsorships, we've collected about eight thousand dollars in sponsorships from twenty-five local businesses. Last year was fifty-five hundred to twenty-one, so a lot more business participation in this ICE Fest. This year, we had about five thousand grants compared to six thousand last year. And all in all, we had about thirty-five entities sponsor or contributing kind, which is about the same as last year. So, we had a lot more people give money and as well as help out. So, it was good.
I think the other aspect, too, is they've tried to expand it, starting with Friday night with the packet pickup and at Grove Theater. And then, they've covered a lot of Saturday, adding the Grub and Pub and all those different events and the Bonfire, and then the race, then on Sunday. So, they've tried to extend it to where people are sticking around longer and making it maybe more of a destination. But then also from a downtown location, I know Friday night and Saturday, it was packed. There was a lot of people downtown. And so, it was very positive to see that. And trying to eat Friday night somewhere was challenging, because there was a lot of people and the parking lots were full. So, it was nice to see all that activity downtown.
Counselor Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. Heinz, thank you for your nice comment. And I would like to let the entire city staff know how much you are appreciated. I saw staff members all over this past weekend, doing all type of activities and helping out and sharing their beautiful smiles with so many people as well. It's events like this that goes a very long way in promoting what we call quality of life. And I just would like to let you all know that you are greatly appreciated for all of the work and hard work and dedication that you put into this event. The other thing is the Grub and Pub was a success. It was a sellout, and I was glad to see that. I was only able to go around to maybe three of the four restaurants, but it looked like all of them were packed. So, that worked out very well. That helps out with economic development in the downtown area, which I believe is very important for our community as well. So, I would just like to thank you again for all of your efforts, everyone in the city. And just let's keep, let's keep this going. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Gregel.
I had a question for Heinz. At the Grove Theater, how did that go? And what was that all about?
That was mainly handled by the chamber.
What was that?
And that was like a pre-party. We had, there had registration going on at that time. It was kind of a casual atmosphere. They had a lot of the characters in dress out there. I didn't go to that.
They, yeah, I was there for a significant amount of time. It was where registration was, so people could pick up their packets. So, it started at five. It lasted until ten. They had adult beverages. They also had popcorn in wraps. But I think most people were actually eating somewhere downtown and then going there, or going there and then leaving and eating somewhere else is what most of that activity was. They did have a band. They had some of the characters and that, and then obviously tables. And so, you know, there is just, I think, from talking to Tracy, she said there'd be sometimes seventy-five to a hundred. But the nice part of it is you'd kind of see them, and then they'd leave, and you'd almost get a new wave of different people. So, overall, they had, you know, three to four hundred potentially come through. And so, it was also a positive way to show off the Grove Theater and the potential for that venue for special events. And those, obviously, it's dependent upon Fran being willing to do that. But it's a beautiful location. And by bringing events downtown, that's bringing some more life there. So...
Thank you.
Heinz, thank you for, you and Andy, for all the hard work that you put in, as well as all the staff members. Realized that there were a lot of people from the city that were partaking in the race, which is interesting, because I asked our city manager, did you run? And she said, no, I walked. But it's amazing when we have staff members actually getting involved. And I think Counselor Coleman said it perfectly. They all had smiles on their faces. It was an exciting time. And how are the ice sculptures holding up?
So far, so good. Unlike the Millennium Falcon, it's still get up there and the, it's not the scooter, but the sitting one is still holding up pretty good. So...
I'm sure everyone has had an opportunity to go down. If you haven't, you know, take a few minutes.
And that'll go towards our Excel Energy Grant Vegetation Management. We can do a similar display as we did over at Sunset Park, over in Boyd and Diamond, of having the appropriate tree under the high lines, under the wires. So... And just to let you know that, two thousand plus, you know, I've planned for three thousand in additional tree plantings, plus another three thousand at the cemetery. So, this year, we'll be doing about eight thousand dollars in tree plantings. And just a heads up, Arbor Week will be the last week in April.
Very good. Thank you, Heinz.
You're welcome.
As the chief comes to the podium, I will talk a little bit about the sound system. We thought we had identified the issue. It still may be the issue, and it might be a lot cheaper than having to look at repairing the system at seventy-five thousand. It was some of the cables were being kicked. And when we touched them, it simulated the exact problem that was happening. So, we got some, we're getting new cables. We're making some fixes, and we'll continue to monitor that. But that's obviously a thirty-dollar fix compared to a seventy-five thousand dollar fix. So... Chief, I'll turn it over to you for an update now.
Well, you know, Heather, I think seventy-five thousand dollars is kind of steep. I think we can all raise our voices if we have to here. Thank you for that, Heather. Chief, thank you for being here this evening.
Mayor, council, thank you for having me. Tonight, I have two updates for you. The first one is the police department has partnered with the San Luis Valley Area Health Education Center, which is known as SLV AHEC. AHEC was able to get a rural opiate overdose reversal grant, and we partnered with them. This grant awarded them funds to provide the training to law enforcement officers in the use of a substance called Naloxone. Naloxone is a FDA-approved nasal spray that we'll be using. The officers will all carry it. And it's a lifesaving medication that can stop or reverse the effects of an opiate overdose. So, this is, opiates include prescription medications such as oxycodone, hydrocodone, morphine, and as well as the illegal drug heroin, which we all know we've seen a lot of heroin overdoses within our community in the past. So, once the Naloxone is delivered to AHEC, they will provide it to the police officers. All of our officers have been given a choice whether or not to carry it. I believe only two don't feel comfortable with carrying it and administering it if they need it. Like I said, it is a nasal application, so there's no needles or anything like that. So, that's a good program that we're going to be involved in. The second update I have for you is Alamosa County has encountered some unanticipated manpower issues within their jail. And so, Sheriff Jackson and Captain Duarte approached me about the possibility of some of our officers working on a part-time basis temporarily in the jail. I discussed this with Heather and Eric, and we've decided to go ahead and allow them to work on a part-time basis. Unfortunately, right now, our policies that we have prohibits any outside employment for any other law enforcement agency. So, what I've done is I've issued an administrative action that allows the temporary override of that policy. And these officers that are interested in working will work in the jail on a part-time basis. My command staff, along with me and their supervisors, will monitor the hours that they're working, their productivity, and make sure that nothing is being affected by this overtime that they will be working. So, I just wanted to update you on that, that you may hear or see some of the officers wearing Alamosa County shirts and things like that. So, they haven't left us.
Chief, thank you for that. So, you're looking at an intergovernmental agreement with the county specific to this issue?
No. They will hire the officers outright as part-time officers. So, they will be county employees.
I know from looking at historically, when we look at fire and how we've done that, we had the option on if we wanted to have them run it through us. But from liability perspectives, but also from a cost perspective, it was probably cheaper for the county that if we just allowed them to work directly with the officers and handle when they're working, when they're not, the pay, and not have it go through us, it actually is probably a little bit cheaper for the county in regards to that compared if we would have had to do an IGA. So, he just did an administrative order to waive that prohibition on the outside employment.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Gregel.
So, this is going to be temporary, or?
It is. The county's anticipating it to be, to last anywhere from four to six months. That will give them time to hire new staff and bring them onboard. If they come back earlier, we will terminate that administrative agreement, and they will no longer be employees for the county.
Well, I appreciate that you're giving them that helping hand. And I think we need to start working more and more with the county, not only with the police, but in other departments.
It's a partnership that we're trying to build.
Good deal. Thank you, Chief.
Counselor Hensley.
So, I'd like to also commend the partnership. I have a question back to the spray. So, if somebody is overdosing or something, is there a timeframe? I mean, I guess, do you know a little bit about how that works right now, or is that not something you really know yet?
Once we're notified of the possible overdose or the medical call, we'll respond to it. And if we believe or there's indicators that there may be an opiate overdose, we can apply it. There's no harm to the person if there's not an opiate overdose, or if there is another medical condition that we don't know about. So, it doesn't hurt the person. There's recent legislation that's been passed that allows for this and gives us immunity. So, we can act and treat them as we see necessary.
I think it's great. I was just more like curious about how it worked and stuff. So, I think that's a great thing that you guys are doing.
I think from a community education perspective, and I know very little about this, except maybe this one additional piece, is that this is something that for families who have people who have addictions, that there might be possibilities for them to get these types of prescriptions as well in case there's potential overdose. So, it's from a public education perspective, definitely something that people may want to look into if they're struggling with those kinds of things.
And that is correct. Any family members of an abuser, or the abuser themselves, could even get this and carry it with them.
Counselor Coleman.
Chief, I just have a comment. I think it's very positive and professional of you to work with Sheriff Jackson on the shortage that they have with their staff right now and allowing your staff to help them at this particular time, just keep up the collaborating and working together. And it's very pleasing to hear a lot of positive things about the Alamosa Police Department when I travel around the different areas. And I've heard a lot of good things from other police departments and department heads. So, just keep up the great work you're doing, not only in Alamosa, but throughout the valley as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the hard work you do for us.
Oh, Chief. I think we got the grant, the foundation for the one hundred thousand.
I did forget that one. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Welcome back, Chief.
Thanks for having me back. That's why she's here to keep me in check. The, we have the San Luis Valley Training Foundation that is the foundation that requests the post funds, the registration fees that you, extra fifty cents, I believe, it went up to now on every vehicle that's registered. And that money goes directly to post or to law enforcement training across the state. We recently applied for, well, the foundation, applied for a grant and was awarded a thousand, one hundred thousand dollars. What we plan to do with that money and the proposal was, we're going to build or try to build a driving track out on the firearms range that we purchased through those funds several years ago. That will enable everybody, including the partnership that we're going to try to build with Trinidad State Junior College, with all law enforcement, with public safety. I know in the past, we've talked to fire departments, the ambulance service, so they can do driving training as well. So, this is a great project, and I'm hoping that we can get the additional funds that we need to successfully build this driving track and provide the training that we all need. Nothing else?
Thank you, Chief.
The only thing from a staff perspective is if you look at your calendar, you can see that it's getting quite long. We've got a lot of work sessions that we are scheduling for you guys, and actually, a few more in the hopper as well that we're going to be adding to it. Looking forward next week, there are several of us that are going to the CML Legislative Workshop. I think Counselor Gregel, Mayor, and Counselor Hensley, and Stefano, as well as Holly and myself, will be going as well. So, we will be well represented up at CML next week. We have scheduled the joint work session with We have scheduled the joint work session with the golf board on February seventeenth. I think that will be a good time just to go over the information, ask some questions, kind of see what their plans are. February twenty-fourth, Holly has scheduled the special meeting for the evaluation of the municipal judge. This is a little different than when you evaluate a city manager. The form of government we have, there's this, you can't tell the judge how to weigh in as the judge type of thing, so. And you're not going to have the same type of form you have when evaluating the city manager. How I've seen it work in other cities is it's a time once a year for you to sit down. They can let you know how they think things are going, what they're struggling with, if there's some unmet needs. If you're hearing some things out in the community or have concerns, it'd be a time to share those as well. So it's not necessarily the same type of evaluation where you're doing a rating system, but it is a time for you to have a direct conversation with one of the positions you're responsible for hiring. So that is what's set up for that. We're also trying to take a look at if we can set a work session either right before that or right after to look at some of the alternative sentencing options that the judge has been wanting to look at. We recently met with Luke Yoder yesterday, to be exact, on some potential grants that might make them even more possible. In our opinion, the more options the judge has in sentencing, one can help eliminate the pressure on the jail, but it could also maybe better target sentencing towards the type of offenders instead of a one-size-fits-all. And so we're looking at both that grant and wanting to update council on some of those ideas. The March second joint work session with P&amp;Z is to see some FaceTime with the consultant that has been hired. It's also a chance to get kind of brought up to date, ask questions, get a feel for what's coming up. We will also be inviting the Historical Commission and Rec Board and make sure they're aware of that meeting as well. And then the Financial Review Work Session, that is the one that was previously planned for the retreat, should only take about an hour, but we'll go through that. And then March thirtieth is the work session on marijuana. From a preparation perspective, staff is just trying to get the historical, you know, what's been done here in Alamosa in regards from a council perspective, but then also statewide, who allows it, who does not, what are they seeing in regards to sales tax and revenues, are they seeing other types of issues, those types of things. So we're just trying to gather all of that, and then you guys can have whatever discussion you want to have related to that. In April, we're probably going to look at scheduling a work session for the CIP and get that going before the budget. And as a reminder, and this will show up on the calendar, the retreat is planned for May sixth and seventh. And at this pace, it's probably going to be here sooner rather than later. So that's some of the stuff coming up.
Thank you, Heather. Counselor Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor. Heather, can we schedule a meeting with the school board? We haven't done that in a while.
So I had some previous communication with Mr. Aleho, and we were going to wait till the new ones came on. And when I was having those communications was also when we were having changes in the city clerk. So last week I forwarded that, so Holly knows kind of where it left off, and she can contact him and try to get that scheduled, so.
And a meeting with the county commissioners?
Correct.
I don't think we've done that in a while.
Correct. That the mayor and I had met probably six months or more ago, just to say how many times for each group should we try to meet? Should we, you know, three times for the county, twice for the school board, different things like that. So I think Holly's going to start plugging away at getting those scheduled.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, council. And so we will then move on to council comment, who has a council comment this evening. Counselor Coleman.
I just have a comment. I would like to thank the city for giving us all an opportunity to go to the CML Conference this past week. I think it was very informative, and anytime we get an opportunity to learn new things, it's great for the entire city. So thank you.
Counselor Grego.
Mayor, I had two of them. First one, the Rio Grande Water Leaders Course that myself, Councilman Coleman, and city manager attended. We're going to offer this course again March twenty-eighth through April, April the first. And the course will be held over at the, we'll get you one of these pamphlets that tells you about the course. And I don't know if you want to elaborate a little bit more on that, Heather, on the course and what we got out of it and what, you know, so.
You know, it is a commitment in regards to, for, I believe, one week we met every night for about three to three and a half hours. But from an educational perspective, they very much go into in-depth on the historical issues of what water has looked like, what the compact between the different states, how that impacts what we're dealing with today. It goes over the seniority of the different types of water rights. And then it also just gets into when you've got some of the federal lands, the state lands, the refuge, those types of things, how that can interact with it. So from a valley perspective, it is extremely educational. It is a time commitment, and they are clear that they want to make sure you attend every night if you sign up. But it's something that if you can do it, is very valuable. And I don't know, Councilman Coleman or Grego, if you'd want to add anything more?
There you go. Heather is absolutely right, and thanks to Councilman Grego. I learned so much about water. I didn't know how precious water really was until I had a chance to go to that training. And I would encourage all the council members to participate. I know I'm going to try to do it again because the first time it was a little bit over my head, but I think the more times you go, and I'm quite sure Councilman Grego has been several times, and you probably learn something new every time. And in the valley, water is our most precious resource, so I really encourage everyone to try to participate if you can. Thank you, Councilman Grego, and Heather.
Councilman Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two things I'd like to talk to you real quick about, give the council an update about the gentleman that approached us about two months ago, I believe, Mr. Muniz. He's a veteran. Remember, he was talking about putting up a memorial for the San Luis Valley War Vets. Well, we've been in contact, and we will be hopefully meeting in two weeks with a group of about six people. I think the first meeting will be a planning meeting and getting to know each other and what they want to do. So I will keep you guys updated on that. Second thing is this, is that we all received this email from Heather as a foreword today. It's a kudos to Jim and his staff and anybody else who works with the Facebook page. And I just want to, I want to communicate to everybody how well the Facebook page for the city does. Last week, sixteen thousand three hundred and thirty-four posts were sent, not posts, people or Facebook profiles saw what the City of Alamosa was doing. And I think that's a spike in numbers because of the Ice Fest. And that, last week, it was seven thousand nine hundred and eight people saw what we're doing here in the City of Alamosa. The City of Alamosa has three Facebook pages, the City of Alamosa's page, the City of Alamosa Activities, and the Cat Tales Golf Course. So just highlighting the effects of social media and how that is helping us promote what we're doing here in the city. Thank you.
To add a little bit on that, I know that we received a call from ASU about a month ago just thanking us for the times that we repost that, because the more, from a partnership perspective, that we do that, then the more touches that all of us are getting and just helps Alamosa in general. So I know for us, you know, TSJC, ASU, the school, the chambers, a lot of that stuff we do repost, but then Jolene, who's actually the lead for a lot of this, and Andy for the activities page. For the Ice Fest, there was tweets coming out that morning to come tell the runners good job or to root them on. And so they're really trying to use the tool in the manner it's supposed to be used, and I think they're doing a great job.
Counselor Grego.
I had one more announcement, I guess. I wanted to recognize the program that the city managers put together for people that have worked with the city for a long time. You know, this is a program I think is, it's in its second year, and I got invited to it this last time they had it. Maybe you might talk a little bit about it, Heather, but it's to recognize these people that have dedicated a long time to the city and working with the city. It goes a long way to thank them, and what you've done is, and I've been here a long time, and I've never seen a program like that, and it does, from talking to those people, they really appreciate it, you know, and, you know, that somebody even cares that, you know, they go to work day after day and that. So maybe you might talk a little bit about the program.
So on an annual basis, we do what we call the Service Awards, and we've revamped that to try to make what our recognition is more valuable to the employee who's then actually getting it. A lot of times, we can get stuck in the mode of giving a plaque or those types of things. But what we've done is they still get the certificate because it's still that thing that designates the five, ten, fifteen, twenty year, and it goes wherever they want to put that. But then we've modified the gifts that we do for, you know, each different level. They get a catalog where then they can pick their own gift, and they can pick something that's meaningful for them. And then the other thing we added is for those that are at their twenty, twenty-five, thirty, and we had a thirty-five year this time, we have a dinner. And we send the invitation to their home, and they are invited to bring a guest. We send it to their home because sometimes municipal employees are fairly shy and humble and don't want a lot of attention. And so we figure by sending it to their home, it might be opened by their significant other, and they can't get out of it. And we also offer a carrot that if they do come to the dinner, they can have the next day off. And so our, we are sneaky, and so we invite them. And part of it is we want them to bring a guest with them because we want someone that's important to them to hear that they're important to us and to make that night memorable. But it's a sit-down dinner, it's a nice dinner, and it's a chance for them to feel appreciated for the years of service that they've provided. And so it's actually one of my more favorite, aside from the employee potluck, it's one of my more favorite events, so.
Well, thank you, Heather, because I've talked to some of those people that have attended, and they really, really appreciate it. Thank you for those efforts.
Counselor Daniel.
Excuse me. I just wanted to say thank you to the counselors who were able to attend the sequential intercept mapping about how people with mental health concerns intersect with the criminal justice system. I think we had a great turnout from the Police Department and from our city council, so thank you for that. But I just wanted to let everyone know, we had seventy-seven youth between the ages of eight and thirteen participate in the Optimist Club Tri-Star Basketball, and thirty-six of those youth are going up to Pueblo in March to be able to participate. And then we usually have a very good showing at the state as well, so I'll keep you updated on all of the good things our Alamosa youth are doing in Tri-Star Basketball.
Thank you. I sent out an email after being approached by Dr. Frank Lucero, and I'm not related to him in any way. I don't know if you saw anything, but they're looking for a letter of support from the City of Alamosa specific to a Hispanic salute that they plan to do in Montevista. And so if it's all right with council, we'll ask Holly to draw up a letter of support, and I'll give you this email. Do you have it, Holly? Not yet. And so with that, that's about the only comment that I had here. And so anyone else? Counselor Vehill.
Yeah, one more. Go Broncos.
All right. Thank you. Well, before I adjourn this meeting, we're going to have a regular work session after the adjournment, specifically to discuss our authority to ban sex offenders within the City of Alamosa. With that, meeting adjourned.